Well, I understand that we're way across the, around the west side, but uh, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not bad.
I just wanna find out, make sure that first thing, what you have, doing, information is, how it's going to do, how it's gonna do.
Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have a presentation?
Yes, uh, Mayor Kelly, if you'll come forward. Kelly is with the, uh, Moore Strong Run this year, formerly the Moore War Run, and they have a presentation.
We just wanted, a very, very, very small token of our appreciation, um, to the city, the staff, the council. Today, we have raised, um, almost fifty thousand dollars through the five years. You guys have been an absolute blessing to us. Um, it started, Deidra helped us start, get this thing going. She kinda turned it over to Parks and Rec and, um, Todd and Teresa have really helped us. The police department is unbelievable. Um, I always think every year, this is the year they're gonna hate me, and they don't. So, um, I really, really appreciate all of your support, and this is the very least we could do. We just wanted, as it, as our fifth year, and like you said, we changed it to strong, um, to show unity, because we are supporting all three of the high schools now, Moore, Westmore, and Southmore. So, um, I just wanted to present you guys with this T-shirt and...
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much for all of your support. We look forward to many more years.
We'll hang a great pride here in City Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, item two is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held September third, two thousand thirteen. Item B, approve the FY two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen jail services agreement with Cleveland County Sheriff's Office for jail services and prisoner housing at a cost of forty-eight dollars per day. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen in the amount of two million sixty-four thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars ninety-seven cents.
Make a motion to approve?
All right.
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item three is consider the reappointment of Ralph Sharar, Gary Lou now, uh, and Louis Williams to the planning commission to serve three-year terms. And I appreciate you guys doing that, too.
Mayor and council, uh, these three planning commissioners, um, are up for reappointment. Um, if so, reappointed, they would serve three more years on the planning commission. Uh, they are here in the audience today if you have any questions of them. Uh, Louis Williams is, is not here. He had a death in the family, so he is not here. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
I just have a quick question, and you may probably be able to answer it. Somebody gets an appointment, there are no, uh, term limits they can serve as long as the council continues to, to reappoint them.
That's correct.
And when their term is up, uh, do they fill out the application themselves if they're interested, or do we do that for them? And just, is it just a procedural thing? Once you're on, you're on, or what?
Well, of course, the council always has to reappoint them, um, but yes, we will fill out a portion of their application for them, because it's asking how many, um, meetings that they missed in that three-year period, uh, to kinda give the council an idea of their attendance record. And then, you know, they will fill out the remainder and sign it, and then it comes before this body for approval.
Okay. Well, I would, I just, I, the next item, I just, there are some vacancies, and I was just excited to see all of the interested applicants. So, I don't know, I think maybe something that the council could consider sometime, and this is just my thoughts, that we may, uh, consider some kind of a term limit, maybe nine years, two or three terms, uh, to be consecutive. And then, then after a break, they could, uh, you know, reapply for it, uh, if they're interested. But if we continue to have, uh, people in the community that are wanting to serve, uh, you know, let's, let's give them that opportunity. That's just, that's my only thoughts and comments on that.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve it.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
Comment, I've, I've made a few of their meetings. I guarantee you, their job's tougher than ours, um, and I appreciate the work these guys have done.
That's very good, thank you. Do we have a motion in a second? Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider one citizen appointment to the planning commission to fill the unexpired term of Sandy Elidge, and consider one citizen appointment to the Moore Board of Adjustment to fill the expired term of Mark Ham.
Uh, mayor and council, this item is, um, to get a, uh, some new, uh, members to our boards, uh, where some members have, uh, uh, Mrs. Elidge has moved out of this Moore city limits, so she's no longer eligible to serve on the planning commission. Of course, our own Mark Ham has been promoted up to this board, um, or council, so he's, uh, not able to serve on the board adjustments. Uh, we did have a lot of very qualified applicants, um, apply, and I believe that those are in your packet. They start on page sixty-nine. Uh, there have been, since the packet was published, uh, several who have, uh, asked to have their name withdrawn from consideration due to time constraints. Um, those would be Kevin Hill, Randy Vance, and Tammy King. We normally like to have the, uh, boards be as, um, balanced as possible between the wards. Um, and just to let you know, in planning commission, um, and in the board adjustment, uh, we are needing more people from Ward one if we wish to keep the commissions balanced, uh, between the wards.
Do we have, uh, commissioner from Ward one right now?
We have one commissioner from Ward one, yes. Um, we really should have three.
Are any of them here?
I believe that most all of them, um, are here, and I've asked them to pre, have prepared, um, just one or two minutes of statements if you guys would like to hear those statements.
Sure, let's go. I don't have a list of, sorry.
Certainly, I can do that.
Okay, that'd be great, thanks.
Uh, let me grab my, here we go. Well, the first one we have, uh, which just happened to be first in the packet, is, uh, Nikki Cooper, Ms. Nikki Cooper. Who is in Ward one.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hi.
I get very nervous if I speak in front of people, so I apologize. My name is Nikki Coop, pardon me?
Just, just relax.
Okay.
It's good.
My name is Nikki Cooper. I've lived in Moore most of my life. I'm a nineteen eighty-eight graduate of Moore High School, when we only had one high school. Um, I moved to Northern Virginia in nineteen ninety, around Washington DC area, and headed back to Moore in nineteen ninety-four, because my heart never left. I really missed home. Over my life, I've watched Moore evolve from a bedroom community with just a few fast food restaurants to a thriving community with a variety of shopping and dining, and even my employer, Hyatt Hotels, chose Moore, Oklahoma, as a place for its shared service center. It's where a hundred and eighty employees support fifty thousand employees across the United States and countless customers. For years, I planned to find a volunteer position, but my kids have been my priority, and now that my youngest son has just gotten his driver's license, I came across this position on Facebook, and I was immediately excited about it. Not only will I have an opportunity to make a difference, but it's a difference that will affect my family, friends, and coworkers for years to come. One of the qualities that I feel would make me, um, a good candidate for the planning commission, um, is that I'm an analyst, not only by day, but also bleeds into my, um, personal life. I have to know as many details as possible before I feel like I can make a sound decision. I ask many, many questions all the time. Um, I feel like I'm good at investigating and problem, problem solving, and in addition to my skills, I just simply have a love for this community, and I would love to make an impact on the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do you know much about what the planning commission does?
Um, just the paperwork that was sent to me about planning, um, things around the city and making decisions, and, um, working with the council to, um, get things approved.
Would you have any problem making the meetings?
No, not at all.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Justin Braun, he's in Ward one.
Evening. My name is Justin Braun. I've been a Moore resident for just about my entire life. Um, one of the exceptions is when I went to OU and lived in Norman for about five years. At OU, I got my electrical engineering degree, and then subsequently, uh, received my MBA from OU. Uh, over the past ten years, I've worked as an electronics engineer for the FAA in Oakville City. During that time, my wife, Amy, and I, uh, were married and decided to make our home in Moore. And, uh, excuse me, my wife, uh, works in the Moore public school system, uh, for the past ten or eleven years. Uh, we've got two, uh, young boys who are, are very much, uh, enjoying the, uh, playgrounds and things of that nature in Moore and various parks. And, uh, just, uh, personally, I, I've really enjoyed seeing the, the progression of Moore from, you know, from kind of a small, uh, a smaller community to one where there's a destination for, uh, you know, going to the Warren for the movies, or any type of restaurants you could wanna go to is here. So, uh, you know, if you all would, uh, would be interested in having me on the commission, I'd like, or on the, be on the planning commission. I'd like to, uh, to see the Moore Vision twenty twenty through and, um, help, uh, implement that plan, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Tamara Hankins, she's Ward two. Uh, Daniel Johnson, from Ward one.
Good evening. My name's Daniel Johnson, and I'm a thirty-two-year resident of the city of Moore, also a graduate of Moore High School. Um, my wife and I are in the process of an international adoption from Haiti, and, uh, I'd love the opportunity to serve on the planning commission here in the city of Moore.
All right, thank you. You're in, was he in Ward one or two?
He was in Ward one.
One, okay, thanks.
Dana Moffett, Ward three.
Well, I'm Dana Moffett, and, uh, I, uh, I've lived in the city of Moore since nineteen seventy-five, grew up in Southakon City. Uh, graduated, uh, Grant High School in nineteen sixty-six, back when they had a football team. And, uh, Oklahoma University, Bachelor of Science in McCant, when cheering, nineteen seventy-three. I worked for the Tennessee Valley Authority for Department of Defense, uh, and I gra, uh, retired from FAA after about twenty-eight years. And my family, uh, has grown up in, uh, in the city of Moore. My wife was a teacher at Moore High School. All three of my children graduated from, uh, Moore High School, and we went to church here, uh, and I've seen the city of Moore recover from several disasters, to be a stronger city. It, it, it's almost as if the disasters themselves caused us to come together and, and grow stronger. And I have no doubt that, uh, we will recover from, uh, the more recent disaster. So I have a love for Moore. Driving down the street, uh, driving down Broadway, driving down, uh, Main Street, I see the old businesses. I look at each one, I can think of somebody that works there now, or somebody I knew who worked there some years ago. And so I have a love of the city, and, uh, I wanna see it grow. I'd like to give something back to the city. And I think that the, uh, work on the planning, uh, commission could do that, could, could provide that, uh, vehicle for me to give back to the city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle McKenzie, from Ward one.
Hi, I'm Danielle McKenzie. Um, I moved to Moore when I was five, and I went to Moore schools my entire life. Um, except for the point when I graduated high school, and then I went to OU, like lots of Moore kids do. Um, graduated high school and then moved to Moore with my husband, who also graduated from Moore. So we have a deep love of the city. Um, I've always volunteered on some committee. Um, I've served on the chamber. Um, I also worked with BNI groups, that kind of thing. The last several years, I worked at the neighborhood level, and, um, decided that three years is about enough for the neighborhood, 'cause I kind of agree with Mark, that you should have new blood in different venues. So, um, this semester, I graduate with my Masters in Public Administration, and after talking to my husband, I kinda felt like this is the point where I wanna make a meaningful difference in my community, in our community. And, um, like a lot of the people here, I have a vested interest. My family's here, they're firefighters, they're teachers, uh, they're business owners in this community. So I have a really vested interest in addition to having children in our public school system. So, um, that's a little bit about me and the one and a half minutes we get. Do you guys have any questions I could help you with?
Is there anything that you would, uh, like to change about the city of Moore?
Um, I think that, changing is a hard word. I think continuing on the same pattern is sometimes, um, a big thing, but, um, as far as issuing new blood and sometimes a new perspective, I think I add maybe a little bit different than some of the perspectives that are on our committees right now. Um, I'm still relatively young. I like to say that anyway, um, and...
She just said the rest of you guys are old.
Uh, no, that's not at all what I said. I just mean, like, I'm under forty still. I still have kids that are in the public schools. I go there every day. After I leave here, I'll go to football, and, um, with the help of, you know, having a husband who contributes to the household, I get to be able to do different volunteer activities as well as be actively involved in our community, so.
So, you, also you, uh, showed an interest in maybe the board of adjustment? So would you be willing to?
I would be willing to go any, either of the ways, um, where I would be needed the most.
Okay.
So, okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all we have.
Okay. We have a lot of good applications.
What's the current breakdown on, um, the wards that are represented in the numbers?
Um, I have that. Uh, we have, from Ward three, we currently have two. From Ward two, we have five. From Ward one, we have one. So we're very heavy on Ward two.
And we have two openings, right, or does it?
We do have two openings. One is for planning commission, and one is for board of adjustment. Board of adjustment isn't near as, um, you know, we'd like to have it balanced between wards, but traditionally, it never really has been a, a big consideration.
So it's more important to have the planning commission balance it possible, right?
Yes, yes.
I would, uh, just throw out there for discussion, Dana Moffett, I've known him, um, a long time, and, uh, his background, I believe he'd be very beneficial to the planning commission.
Ward three though.
Right. Yeah, I think her question is, do we wanna, uh, the wards balanced? I, I too know Dana, and I have known him for thirty years. I know his background. He'd be terrific. In fact, I've even, he knows, I've even talked to him about taking this seat, um, when the day comes that I no longer feel like I should be here. That's how much I think of him, um, but the question is, or, yeah, and, and I support what you're saying. The question is, do we want somebody from Ward three, or are we gonna try to stick to the Ward one issue? Uh, who's the fifth of those?
Nikki Cooper is in Ward one, Danielle McKenzie is in Ward one, um, Daniel Johnson. Those are three.
But on the board of adjustment, it doesn't really matter that much, right?
Right, it's...
Well, the two Ward one applicants, for Ms. Cooper and Ms. McKenzie, do you guys plan on living in that same area for a while, or?
Yes. I do. Now I still have a son in high school, so I'll be for him.
There was one other church named...
That's right.
Daniel Johnson.
Oh, that's right, Mr. Johnson.
Well, we're at four different locations, and I've heard this one year, all of them are one.
Worked for two, right?
Well, Ms., uh, McKenzie expressed interest on the board of adjustment. Out of all of the applicants we received, she was the only one to show an interest there.
I guess the question, do you guys wanna keep them balanced, or?
Ward two is, well, it's sort of hasn't been.
I'd like, I'd like, you know, at least more balance than what there is.
Obviously, we don't need somebody else from Ward two in there.
Right.
Or we get five.
We've never had this many people apply, so it's never been a problem before.
Well, just maybe people applying, the quality of applicants, we're very, we're very appreciative of the problem you've just given us.
Yes. Yeah.
Well, my, just, my vote would be for Dana Moffett on the planning commission, and Ms. McKenzie on the board of adjustment. That's my two cents.
How about if you reverse that? Since he's from Ward one?
He's Ward three.
He's from three?
Yeah.
I would, uh, I would, uh, I'm sure that we can do that in the same motion, because it's a different venue, I mean...
Okay, well, we can break it down.
That, that is a motion, right? You, you made a motion?
Well... I haven't yet. I'm just throwing it out. That's my two cents. That's where, where I would, where I would go.
Okay.
I make the motion, I would make the motion, I would select Danielle McKenzie, for the, uh, planning commission.
Okay. We have a, a motion for Danielle McKenzie on planning commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for your vote?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
No.
Robert Kraus.
This is for Danielle McKenzie, Ms. Kraus?
Yes. Planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yes?
Jason Blair.
Uh, no.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Do we have a motion for person for the, um, board of adjustment?
Mr. Moffett, would you, uh, Mr. Moffett, would you be interested in the board of adjustment? Will I make a motion for, uh, Mr. Dana Moffett for board of adjustment?
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote if there's no other discussion?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Congratulations to both of you. Now, we will have some other openings come up in the planning commission, and a couple of, not planning commission, in the Parks Board maybe, and there might be another thing or two yet. We'll see.
And I would just encourage people to keep watching Facebook and the city's, uh, government channel, and that's where we post those things. There'll be a lot of opportunities, so thank you so much for your interest.
Appreciate it. All right. Item five is consider rezoning application number nine oh four, located in the northeast quarter of section twenty-seven, township ten north, range three west, being south of nineteenth street and west of Telephone Road, from A two suburban agricultural district to C three general commercial district, and approve ordinance number seven five seven one three. Application by Teddy Bear Partners LLC, Jason Fritz, planning commission recommended, uh, we'll hear this item on September the third, or, excuse me, September the tenth. So, planning commission hasn't heard this?
It was last week.
It did, yes, last week, sorry. I was not quite understanding that statement, but yes.
I didn't either.
Um, this, these, both these items, um, five and six are companion items on your agenda. Um, both were considered the planning commission, um, last Tuesday, uh, and they were approved unanimously. The property is located south of southwest nineteenth street, on the west side of South Telephone Road, is currently zoned A two and is vacant. Um, the applicant is proposing to develop a, a drive-through fast food restaurant on that parcel. Uh, public water and sewer are available, uh, to the site. Access will be provided by South Telephone Road. Uh, one curb cut to Telephone Road will be permitted with a cross-access, uh, to the larger Fritz Farm commercial development. Uh, there is no floodplain located on the property, and the site lies within a stormwater recoupment district, uh, where off-site detention has been provided, uh, north, in the Little River Park, and, uh, a stormwater recoupment fee will be charged at the building permit stage. Uh, the final plat includes, uh, one lot of approximately one acre in size. Staff recommends both of these items. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is this the Dairy Queen property?
It is, yes.
Has there been any, I know it's a stupid question, any opposition? I've seen a thousand people say yay. Has anyone said boo?
There has been no opposition.
I don't think so. I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right, thanks. Do we have a second? All right, thank you. Would you call for the vote? There's no other discussion?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries.
You know when they open up, this is gonna be the biggest line you've ever seen. I'd have to have Dairy Queen, right?
I'm not gonna be there.
All right, way to go, Steve. Okay, item number six, it's considered the final plat of Fritz Farm Edition, section three, located in the northeast quarter of section twenty-seven, township ten north, range three west, being south of nineteenth street and west of Telephone Road. Application by Teddy Bear Partners LLC, Jason Fritz, this is in Ward three.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider awarding bid number one three one four dash zero zero one, sale of a surplus-covered bridge to Jerry Gray in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, mayor and council, at the August fifth city council meeting, uh, the bridge at Veterans Park was declared surplus. Uh, we solicited bids, we received one bid in the amount of five thousand, which was the, the minimum that we asked for. So, uh, staff would recommend that you accept the bid, and, um, so the removal of the bridge can begin immediately.
Okay.
I may have to take any questions.
Uh, this is for Randy. Randy, can we do this legally?
Yeah, so we've gone through the whole process, it's, uh, the current process is followed.
To staff to hear you. Thank you.
I asked you this last time, Todd, but are we gonna incur any expense on removing it stuff, or is that only the people buying it?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Are we gonna incur any expense on moving it, on the stuff?
No, no, uh, the, the bidder will remove it at his expense. He has thirty days, I think, from the acceptance of the bid to move it out.
Any idea, I know that we're probably way ahead of ourselves, but any idea how much it'll cost to replace that bridge yet?
We don't know. Uh, the bridge that we're looking at would be similar to the design of the ones that we have out there. Depending on the length, we don't know. Um, probably in the forty to fifty thousand range, if I hadn't guessed, but that's just a guess.
I know that's way early, but I'm just curious. Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Second, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Have we got the check yet on Veterans Park from Coca-Cola?
Not yet. Not yet. We're, we're hopeful here, next week or two, we'll know something.
All right, everybody drink water till we get it. Would you, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus. Robert Kraus.
Yes, yes, yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eight, Consider Awarding Bid Number One Three One Four Dash Zero Zero Two, Demolition Services to the Lowest and Most Responsible bidder.
Mayor and Council, staff would recommend this item be tabled. This was a, we went through the bid process for the duplexes located out on Southwest Thirteenth and Fourteenth, east of McAlpine Drive. And during that process, the owner of the property solicited bids. Uh, staff has met with the successful bidder who he hired to demo and remove those duplexes. We've had several discussions with the contractor. They're making progress, they're a little behind schedule, but uh staff has met with the owner of the duplexes. He felt likewise, so we feel like that the process will speed up. And at this point in time, the way we bid that project, we bid at turnkey, so it wouldn't be fair to open any bids at this point. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Stephen, are you familiar with the guys that they're going to use, the company?
Yes, it is a local contractor in the metro area.
Is this a new owner of the property or is it the same gentleman?
No, it's the same owner.
Romeo?
Romeo Dinaeus.
Do you have pretty good faith though it's going to happen in a good, well, quality way?
Well, we feel certain it's either they're going to finish the job or we'll solicit bids again and remove them, but we felt like it was only fair to go ahead and allow, give him the opportunity.
There's a contract to purchase this property as well, so there's another group of of people that are involved with it that Romeo I think is working with and working through the cost on it. Um, so we feel like that with one group or the other, it's likely they'll take care of it.
Sounds like he has moti, sounds like he has motivation to get it done, it sounds like.
Yeah, and I think we gave him till the end of September.
They have thirty days.
As I recall.
I make a motion to retable this item.
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you both. Would you call for the vote, place the table?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item is tabled. Item number, excuse me, item number nine is Consider Approval of an Agreement with Billy Casper Golf LLC for Evaluation and Consultation Services Regarding the Possible Golf Course Acquisition in the Amount of Twenty Thousand Dollars.
Mayor and Council, this uh group uh is the same group that the city of Midwest City uh used a couple of years ago when they were looking at the possibility of acquiring um a golf course, I think from Tinker over there. Um, and as you all are aware, we have the opportunity to look at feasibility of acquiring Broadmore Golf Course. And um we as staff certainly don't know a lot about uh running a golf course and looking at profit profitability in terms of um acquiring it in the beginning anyway. Uh, so we, I talked to the city manager of Midwest City, knowing that they own public golf courses already, um and he recommended this company. We got in contact with them, talked to them. Uh, the proposal that was sent uh is uh the same proposal that they sent, I believe it's the same price that they did for Midwest City a couple of years ago. The document that was on your desk tonight, I should have gotten to you before, I apologize, but this is the report that they gave to the city of Midwest City whenever they were looking at acquiring that golf course. Um, so um the owner of Broadmore is wanting us to make a decision in that regard fairly soon, uh so um we're presenting this to you tonight to consider um hiring this company to look at the financial feasibility of this.
Well, the, this company is nationally known and respected for their expertise in these areas, so I think this is a good move. That way we get a professional really analyzing as to whether it'd be, and and I was impressed at uh in looking at the uh uh report they gave to Midwest City that uh they analyzed uh the entire situation and uh in in regards to the metropolitan area and so forth, so um I think this would be money well spent, particularly when we're talking about what would cost by Broadmore.
Now, Mr. Roberts, were you, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, are you saying that they they uh look at the probability of it compared to like other golf courses and stuff, they take that into consideration too or?
They they look at the probability of it, uh not necessarily in comparison to other golf courses, because uh one of the things that they, I think, look at here is uh what uh what has been happening out there. I mean, what is the current cash flow and so forth and nothing that in consideration as to whether it'd be a profitable move for us. And um that's kind of, you know, and they have other criteria that uh they would use as well, but um I th- I think the uh expertise that they can provide uh puts us much on much uh solider ground than what it would be if we or city staff tried to analyze it.
And Mr. Edie, do you think they'll give us the uh downfalls of it too, maybe what needs to be fixed and stuff and all that stuff?
Absolutely. The report they gave to the city of Midwest City basically recommended that they not do that, so they're going to look at it from a independent uh perspective and give us an idea from the standpoint of what it would cost us to operate it, um looking at what other courses in the metro, private and public, uh what it costs to play there. They look at the number of rounds that are available for all the golf courses in the metro area and take a look and see if there was, there's, there's, there's an overabundance of golf course rounds or there's not enough golf course rounds to be played in the metro. Again, when mid, when they did this for Midwest City in two years ago with the economy then, they determined there was an abundance, overabundance of uh golf course rounds available in the metro area. So I don't know what we'll bring now, um with the economy being a little better, it should be better, but um.
I think also a a history of what's been happening at Broadmore uh during this time period also will give us a picture of the.
And look at what kinds of capital improvements we may need to make uh to the course uh if the city were to decide to go ahead and buy it. So it's a pretty comprehensive evaluation of, I I think it'll give you enough information to be able to make a a good decision with regard to whether to try to enter into negotiations to purchase that course or not.
How long, how long will it take them to come up with a good report for us?
Uh, I forgot what he said.
Is that a nine over eighteen?
Oh, okay. Close, that's sixty days.
I I think so, but I was just going to double check in the agreement.
Would that sixty days work of, is that working the timeframe as the owner of the golf course?
Stan, you might address that.
Yes.
Okay.
He's willing to work with the city. He would like to see a plain and public municipal golf course. What's happening, he has two different golf companies, contact him, try and purchase the product.
Okay, thank you, sir.
He did, he did tell us sixty days, um, I don't see it right here in his agreement, but that's what he did indicate to us.
You think twenty thousand is a pretty decent price for something like this, Steve?
I I don't have, we don't have any experience with it. It it didn't seem to me to be out of line for a professional consultant to come in and look at all this, and it's a fairly detailed report. And again, that's what Midwest City paid, but I don't have a feel for it because we've not had this kind of thing before.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that uh we uh approved the agreement with Billy Casper Golf.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this?
I would just um, I know the the big picture of our city budget, twenty thousand dollars is not huge, but it's, you know, it's taxpayer dollars. Um, of course, I want to be confident that we are, you know, giving our okay to spend that, that we have, have the information and I know you're, I care about and work hard for the city, but just to get all the information a little bit, uh, Debra too earlier, so I'd just like to read through stuff. I feel confident that if a citizen comes to me, why don't you spend twenty grand, I could be able to tell.
Yeah, and and I fail to get it into the agenda soon.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number ten is Consider Ordinance Number Seven Five Eight Thirteen, Amending Part Ten, Chapter Four, Article B, Section Ten Dash Four Twenty Seven of the Moore Municipal Code by Providing That Only City-Owned, Operated, Authorized, Permitted Storm Warning Sirens or Horns Shall Be Exempted from Violation of the North Ordinance Providing For Severability and Providing a Repealer.
Yes, Mayor and Council, shortly after the uh blast tornado, uh, Mr. Kitsch came to me and expressed some concerns about information that he was receiving on possibilities of private citizens buying and hooking up and running their own uh weather and tornado sirens. Uh, the confusion that that would cause, the panic that that may cause uh within the community prompted the two of us to uh address that issue, address that situation by this ordinance. So we amended what we already had uh in hopes that that would help uh prevent the situation that he was most concerned with. Uh, if you have any other questions about that, I'm sure he can address them, but uh we felt this was the best way to cover and and protect that, uh protect the citizens also.
Okay, do we have?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Just Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eleven is Discuss Possible Implementation of an Employee Satisfaction Survey to Help Management Measure Employment Engagement Satisfaction.
Mayor, this uh item is the um is to consider authorizing us to uh perform a set employee satisfaction survey. I submitted to you on the desk uh this evening a copy of the proposed survey and sent out a little bit earlier by email and whether you were able to get that or not, but this is about a fifty-question survey that will help us begin to measure um um how our employees are doing and their level of engagement in their job and their satisfaction in their job. We've not done this before. I think it's a good thing to look at and do and then do every year or two after that because uh we don't have any baseline information or really any information to start with other than just hearsay or what people might say, no perhaps, but um I think this will help us um with that. Deidre helped me put this together and she's a good solid background with this, so we think this will will help us um quite a bit. And we will uh give the survey um and then compile those results and get them to you.
Mr. Edie, I have a couple of questions for you on this. Um, how do you, how are you going to get it out to the citizens, uh the citizens, the citizens, employees?
We are going to print it just like it is here and get a copy to every employee.
Okay, so you're pretty, you feel comfortable that they'll feel anonymous when they get it back to you? Because I know it's going to be real important, something like this.